I call to order the Gladstone City Council's special meeting for May 19th, 2021. It's 5:30 PM. For the Governor's Executive Order 20-16 regarding compliance with Oregon's public meetings laws, the city of Gladstone is binding by social distancing requirements during the coronavirus pandemic. This meeting will be conducted both in person and using the Zoom platform. The Zoom access instructions can be found on the meeting agenda. Members of the city council, staff and public all have access to this meeting. The special meeting has been called by at least three council members per hour requirements. Though we know public comments allowed, however, the citizen in question is available to answer any questions. We will not have a consent agenda, business from the audience, nor business from the council. The only agenda item to be discussed is the release of confidential information as noted in the agenda. Can you please call to?
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Here.
Counselor Hartman? Counselor Todd?
Here.
Counselor Garlington?
Here.
Mayor Stimple?
Here. Right, we're going to start with staff. Chad.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the councils. For the record, Chad Jacobs from the City Attorney's Office. So, I believe the purpose of tonight is really to allow you all, as a group, to have a conversation. The goal is to see what, if anything, you all would like to do to address the release of confidential information as set forth in the agenda. As I've explained to you in some of my emails, there's a myriad of options available. You know, those can range from doing a full investigation, those can range from simply asking people, you know, if they released the information, to not doing anything, to simply offering a statement saying that, you know, you disapprove of the release of the information and that you support staff. Those are just some examples. Certainly, you all are intelligent and creative people and can come up with other ideas, but the goal for tonight is to allow a conversation to occur. And so, with that, I'm happy to answer questions, walk you through any legal issues, but it's or help facilitate the conversation if need be. But again, the goal is to really allow you all to have a conversation with each other about what the council as a body would like to see done.
Right, Jackie, do you have anything? No, I don't, thank you. Okay, so we can do this a couple different ways. We can focus solely on the investigation piece of this, and I'll go around and I'll ask people's opinions and statements. Or we can go another path and decide what we're going to do to move forward because the information is already out there. We can't pull it back. It's there and it's something that we have to deal with. So, just solely focusing on an investigation is not going to pull that information back and make it go away. So, Counselor Garlington, what's your opinion?
Um, my feeling is that leaking information that is considered confidential is really kind of a scary thing. Just looking at it as a whole, depending upon what that information is. And, but by the same token, we have three council members that are no longer with this group, that were part of the group when that came together. So, they are now citizens, I mean, in all terms. Are you going to haul them all into jail? What's the point at that, you know? I'm not, I'm not sure what it would... I'm kind of torn. I understand that it's not correct to have confidential information out there. We're supposed to keep it safe, you know? By the same token, things have a way of getting out there, bottom line. The UPS man that tried to do something really nice on the low key, and now all of a sudden he's the hero out on the internet. That's what happens. That's the kind, that's what happens now in this day and age. If that stuff doesn't go away. I can give you a really good example was the sale of this property right here. It was no sooner thought about, and the entire town was talking about it. There wasn't a whole lot confidential about that after a short time. So, I guess... My vote would be at this time to, I think letters need to be written, yes. I hate to even have a spend that kind of time and money on that after all the time and money that have been spent the last couple of weeks. An investigation? No, I'm not, I would not vote for that.
Counsel Hartman?
You know, I think for me, the investigation is to find out who amongst in this room, or whoever had access to this information gave this to a private citizen. And that to me is a breach of trust in this room, a breach of trust in this community, that you would take it upon yourself to, someone would take it upon themselves to use administrator beds as a pawn in their political agenda and their play. I think it's disrespectful. I am absolutely for an investigation because I think we need to know who we're all working with. One of the people that was there still serves on one of our floors. Yes, two of them are not active within this city, but there are still people sitting in this room that have the opportunity to share very pointed titled, private confidential information. And the citizens are speaking. You all have seen the emails, I'm sure you all have fielded phone calls. They're fed up, they're so sick of the back and forth conversation. And I feel like I have a very unique position because I went from private citizen to elective official in a matter of weeks. And I wasn't involved in the city until last week. And I watched many, many city council meetings to catch myself up. I wanted to understand who I'm going to be working with. And it's apparent that there's anger between people in this room. There's people who don't like each other. I get that you have past histories and that's understandable, but you can see it. Our citizens see how much we all hate each other, or you all hated each other, and all of the vitriol, all of the negative articles, and it's got to stop. And we have to hold people accountable for this. And this is unacceptable, in my opinion. And this meeting should have been called a lot sooner than this past weekend because we should have been in here talking about how we're going to stand up and make sure we condemn these actions and know that we're supporting our staff, we're supporting our other counselors, we're supporting our city because this is a waste. Like, we all were elected to be here and...
Time out for one second?
Yes.
Linda, I'd just be out there says the volume needs to be, can't hear well, out in the lobby. Carry on.
I just, I, I'm in full support of the investigation so that we all know who's in this room. Because to me personally, I can't trust anyone who's honest with us who had this information because there is a potential chance, like, what's going to stop you from leaking information that is really, really confidential? And, I mean, it just, it's time that we take a stand against this sort of behavior. And it's got to stop. It's so petty and so embarrassing. And I don't, I, that's not the type of government I want to be a part of. That's not why I ran, and it's not why I sit up here, to sit here and talk about something that is potentially illegal. And, you know, I, so yes, I am for an investigation. I think people need to hold time. Well, I think I need to know who I'm working with. I think we all need to know who we're working with and what we're dealing with. Because to be quite honest, this is BS. Like, this is, this is embarrassing. And I, I can't imagine that any of us right now are proud to be in here that this information, that we broke each other's trust, and that this information got leaked to a private citizen so that they could use administrator beds as a pawn in their political agenda. And so, yes, I definitely would like an investigation.
Can I say one thing really quick?
Yes.
I never even, I, I, I hear what you're saying. I just want you to know that when I said I, the reason that I didn't, I never even thought it was somebody in this room. Never, never thought.
Almost everyone in this room has had access except you and I, especially.
Right. Okay.
Counselor Todd?
Yeah. I'm going to say what I'm going to say, and then I would like, Chad, if you could also give me the definition of what attorney-client privilege is, who the, who the client is and that, who owns that property? I'd like that at the end because I want to make sure that that's pretty clear in my mind and anybody else's that's listening. This was a confidential personnel matter, and it had been, as far as I know, handled satisfactorily by all parties. And so, for this to be illegally, in my, it's stolen, in my opinion, and given to somebody with half the story, to me, it's egregious, and it's not fair to our staff to do that. It's not fair to our citizens to not look into this. If we don't do something and look into this breach, how do we, how do we say it's not going to happen again? You can't say it's not going to happen. It's not like it was 20 people in a room. There was six people on the original email. I know that Greg's mad that I added his name to it. I didn't know that you were on the second.
I'm not mad at all.
Okay, just stating who was on it. Still, if you think about it, the, besides Lyndon East, there's, there's the other two counselors that are actually on city boards. I believe that Neil is on a city board. I believe that Tom Mercer was on a city board. I'm just saying, we have to look at, into it. The only way we can ever make sure it doesn't happen is by knowing how it happened in the first place. I don't care what this story was about. I actually don't care why it happened. I want to know how it happened. And that is what we need to do to be as clear and transparent to our neighbors who are calling and asking. You know, I don't hear anybody sitting there, I have not heard from one person or read one email, people saying, "Yeah, I'm so glad that this got out there." They're like, "This feels icky. It feels actually like a revictimization of somebody who had a complaint." Like, if, I just, I, it's not fair. So, I want to, I, we will have to have an investigation if I have anything to say about it. So, and can you give the definition, please?
Sure. Counselor Todd, so the attorney-client privilege is a both common law, which means created by the courts, and statutory protection to allow communications between an attorney and a client to remain confidential. And in the context of an organization such as the city, the client is the city as an entity. It's not any one individual person in the city. So, generally speaking, when you're, or you're talking about an organization, an organizational structure is set up to say who has certain powers and authorities. And for the city, that's done either by the charter, which we're going to talk about next week, or the municipal code. And under the Gladstone's form of government, the privilege generally belongs to the council as a body. And so, it's the council as a body who would waive that privilege if they wanted the information to be released publicly. And that, there's not one individual who has that authority to do so, to waive that privilege unless the council as a body delegates authority to an individual to do that.
Thank you.
Counselor Tracy?
So, before I comment about whether or not I'm behind an investigation, I'm going to read this email because this is the rest of the story, to quote Paul Harvey. This email's from City Administrator Jackie Betts. It's dated 8/6/2020, 4:15 PM. There is no caveat at the bottom for attorney-client privilege on this email. Email starts off, "Hi Chad, Counselor Matt Tracy and I have been able to work through my concerns expressed from the incident that occurred a couple of weeks ago. We have both come to an agreement on how we can productively improve our communications and move forward for the betterment of Gladstone. I am satisfied with the outcome and do not believe the city council should need to have an executive session to discuss this. Thank you for your assistance in facilitating this conversation. Jackie Betts, City Administrator, City of Gladstone." I'm reading that because that's the part of the story that was conveniently left out by whomever is on what I will call, I'm going to go ahead and characterize, a character assassination attempt. And I don't appreciate it. I volunteered for this position. I was elected, duly elected to the position. It's a volunteer position. And I have people on this council, I believe, are trying to come after my livelihood, disparage my reputation, and do everything they can do to damage my credibility. For what? The city of Gladstone? City of Gladstone has done pretty well over the last five years, and I'm going to take a little credit for that because it was kind of a, a little bit of a circus prior to the July 2017, 2017 appointment of me. And it was a circus at that appointment. And I know the people in this room who were there can attest to that. And anybody who wants to find out whether it was a circus or not could actually go back and review the video. I don't understand how leadership in this town is about suppressing and oppressing others. That's not leadership. If you have to cheat to win, you're not good. I truly believe that. I will be definitely voting to go forward with an investigation, and I think it should be a very robust investigation. And I'm not really concerned about how many people are pulled into that net. Frankly, the information that was leaked, and the manner it was leaked, and then further forwarded to, I heard today, it's 20 next-door neighborhoods. So, it really isn't about Gladstone, whomever's out there broadcasting this. I think that we have a serious issue. And the staff in this city deserve to have their confidentiality. And this is a personnel matter. It involved me, it involved City Administrator Betts. But I just read an email. That was, that was the successful conclusion of this. We worked through this. And City Administrator Betts and I also, I have a stack of emails here where we took the learning experience we had on a very difficult conversation and actually worked together to facilitate the kinds of conversations we needed in the community. I give Jackie Betts a lot of credit for leadership because that's true leadership. The oppression and suppression of other people and their thoughts and their opinions, no matter what, if you disagree with them, that's politics. We're supposed to compromise. Counselor Garlington and I might disagree on a lot of things, but I do agree that we want good parks in our city. And we'd like to work around making that happen. But I don't need to suppress you or oppress you to do so, or push somebody else in your group or a group of folks who want good parks aside to be able to do it. I don't need credit for this. I just want to see the city grow and thrive. I will be wanting an investigation as well. Thank you.
Counsel Alexander?
I want to start off because I am transparent, full transparency. Yes, I did request that information. It came after the night I voted for Matt Tracy for council president. Mayor Stimple said she had a problem with that. I asked her later, what was the problem with that? I think he's more qualified. She said, "It was another issue. I can't talk about it. It's confidential." I said, "All right." I then, Chad, right, reached out to you, said, "Now that I'm a counselor, can I find out what this rift is?" And he said, "Yes, you can." And he sent me that information. I read it, I seen how confidential it was. I put it away, never to be spoken of again, and I had nothing to do with this. And I think everyone's doing a good job. I think we're moving forward. And I don't know how this happened or how we're going to get past it, but um, whatever we got to do, you know, that's what we got to do. So, there you go.
I did not do it either, so that's all I know too.
I think I, it does need to be looked into because what other personnel issues can we could end up getting out there that we can't be sending personnel issues out there? I'm pretty sure you would agree with, what's our liability for letting personnel files out?
Want to go into that?
So, so I will give you the typical lawyer answer is, it depends. But, you know, as a general rule, you don't want to be releasing confidential information.
Yes. So, I think we need to figure, I do think we need to figure out who gave it. And we need to figure out how to recover from this because when this continually gets posted on online sources, online media, if it costs Matt his job because somebody does something, because of somebody making these mistakes, this was a direct attack. It's not the first direct attack for the same issue, but it was a direct attack on, on Matt. And I do think it, I think it needs to be looked into on how we can resolve it and on figuring out how the papers got out there.
All right. I don't know how much money we've spent on this, and I would start with the very first incident when it happened. The city has spent a lot of money on this. And I agree, we need to find out what happened. The city has spent a lot of money on this, and it started when the incident first happened and has continued on while big gap in between. So, I'm concerned, fiscally concerned about the amount of money that we're spending on a poor judgment call. I'm also worried about what it's going to look like if instead of focusing on what happened and only focusing on the person that released the information, if we only focus on that, it's not going to look good for us because then people are thinking that we're still covering it up. And I understand that Counsel Tracy and Jackie Betts had a meeting and they put it behind him, that's fine, but it still happened, unfortunately. And now the information is out there.
You're propagating and perpetuating something that's beyond, the conversation, the difficult conversation that took place, you're acting as though, Mayor, you're acting as though there are continual... I mean, you just keep bringing it up. Like, you're not satisfied with the answer. You're not satisfied with the conclusion, or with two adults having an adult conversation about, you know, difficult conversations. I don't know what, I don't know what you're trying to do here. If you're really trying to basically just drag me through the mud, then just, just say it and do it because you're bringing up the incident again. It's like...
Well, but that's why we're here.
We're, we're not here for that. We're actually here because of the leak. And we're here because half of the story was leaked and because it was a character assassination attempt on me, and it was also putting our city administrator in a very, very, very rough position. So, you want to talk about the incident again? I guess Jackie Betts and I could sit down with you and maybe a mediator, we could discuss how some two adults do get over having had a difficult discussion and then can go on for nine months and work closely together. This is her issue. This is not your issue, Mayor. This is my point.
The issue is that it's out there and we need to address it.
And I would be willing to say that you're concerned about it being out there, yet when it was being voted to be taken down off a next door, numerous neighborhoods outside of Gladstone, you voted out of, one out of seven, eight, nine, to leave it up.
I vote, keep it up on every single one.
Okay.
That is what I do.
Why wouldn't you not vote?
So, that doesn't...
Why wouldn't you not vote? You don't need to.
I didn't even ask to be a part of that group to vote on anything, so I just vote, keep it on every single one.
Yeah, that, that leads me to believe that...
I don't think that we need to be censoring everybody, so I vote, keep it for every single one.
I was a lead for about four years on that one. I know you're a reviewer. You don't have to vote. There's 50 other people, and it would just be taken care of. You don't even have to do it. I, I, if it had anything to do with me, I never had anything to do with it. Actually, the second I got elected, I abdicated my, my role, and I said, "I don't want to do it anymore because I shouldn't do it because the optics are bad." Thank you.
But this is not a censorship issue. This is your leadership issue. I didn't go in to look at all. Somebody gave it to me. The people are texting us, Mayor, because they're concerned about the fact that you're not taking a leadership role here and leading the city. You're putting us in a liability position, and the liability position's not really good for the city. If you want to continue to perpetuate erroneous information through, through social media and put your name on it, I guess that's your choice. But what I'm saying is, for you to be telling us that you're so concerned about it, yet while you're perpetuating erroneous information across the network, the next-door network, that, that doesn't make logical sense to me.
I'm not perpetuating erroneous information. I simply said, "Keep it." And from what I understand, what's on the internet is facts.
It's not facts, Mayor, that's really...
It's half-truths. He just explained the rest of the story. They worked it out.
Yeah.
This is her business to share.
So, I'm, I'm just going to jump in, and you all can certainly continue to have this conversation. It's not my place to tell you not to, but we're not really focusing on how to proceed. We're sort of focusing on some personality and political issues. And by all means, if you want to have that conversation, you can, but I'm just trying to, you know, hopefully get you guys towards a path that will move towards some sort of
Sure, but the trust is broken, Chad.
I, I fully understand and recognize that, but you know, you know, I...
I mean, we could...
And this is an important conversation if you want to have it, but it's not necessarily the purpose of why we got together tonight. And if you are going to have that conversation, like, you began to have that conversation in January, it may be good to have a facilitator in here and have that kind of conversation and really dig into some of these issues. But I don't know that we, and when I say we, I'm speaking for Jackie, and she can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, that we as your staff are prepared to facilitate that conversation with you tonight.
Well, I don't think you are, and I, and I don't see, we, we can stop the conversation, but it's back to doing exactly what we do every time. The mayor says, "No, I'm not involved." People who are closely tied to the mayor are involved in this, and here we are again. And this has happened to counselor after counselor, and I think that we're finally at the point where, yes, we probably should have the conversation.
Yeah. And, and that can be a basis for moving forward with an investigation, you know? And if, and if you do want to have an investigation, I'm hearing it sounds like there's at least four, if not five of you who are saying that, yes, we should do that, then the conversation should sort, sort of evolve into, well, what would that conversation look, or what would that investigation look like? And what does the council want to do? And taking into consideration, you know, the amount of money you want to spend or other sorts of things, and like, how deep of a dive you want to go into this, and sort of making some progress. And that's all I'm trying to say. But, you know, but again, it's not my place. If you all want to have this conversation tonight, you can. I just don't know, in my experience, how productive it's going to be without a sort of neutral third party facilitating that conversation a little bit.
Okay, so noted, and I guess we could probably focus on the investigation. I think we have a lot to unpack here. I don't think it's just the investigation over this incident. So, I guess I'm fine with that. Thank you.
Can I ask a question too? What, so what, what, okay, so let's say we do an investigation. What, what would be the, what would be the outcome? Should you find out who gave the information out? What would be, I mean, what, what, now what?
It depends. So, so it sort of depends on what you find out, and if you find out, you know, how it got leaked or who leaked it, you know, there, there's different consequences that could occur. So, for example, if it turns out it was an employee who did that, there are certain actions that the city could take. If we find out that it was a sitting member of the council, under the council rules, there's action that this council as a body can take to formally censure that person. If the voters were that upset about the fact that a member of the council did this, they could start the recall process. If it was someone who's no longer serving on the council, who got this information or had this information from either being on the council or otherwise, the city could potentially take some sort of legal action to write cease and desist letters, demand letters to get any confidential information back and sort of take steps to protect the city from any further confidential information being leaked. You know, it really all depends on sort of what the results are, if any. I mean, there's, I think there's a possibility that we'll never find out, you know, because an investigation can only go so far unless some, you know, it's, it's not like it's a criminal investigation where we're going to have the authority to sort of, you know, go in with a warrant and start searching people's computers. You know, a lot of it's going to be interviewing people and trying to get people to say, you know, yes or no, or pull out information one way or the other.
And is a former counselor obligated to talk to you?
No. Oh, that, there's not obligated to talk to us, but certainly if they're not willing to, you know, that can be taken into consideration for other actions.
I find it really interesting that four of the people in this room are the same people who didn't want to investigate the fact that we had a sitting counselor that didn't even live in the city for two years.
No, no. I'm going to, I'm going to stop you there because you weren't on city council at that time, and she came and she brought five pieces of ID.
But the information gets out, doesn't it?
Yeah. So, you know a half-truth to it. That is not what happened. There was no reason...
Exactly where she lives, lived, so...
Do you know what her legal residence is? Did you look at her driver's license? Did you look at, she brought five pieces of ID that are... Anyways, that's what it was.
The information didn't leak out because you didn't have that bit of information.
Well, that's because it was...
No, she apparently did have the best piece of information because, you know, these were, we were talking about the city counselor at the time, and people who weren't privy to that conversation shouldn't have been privy to the conversation. So, yeah, I... Yes, yes. And the resolution to it as well.
It's more the resolution. The resolutions never seem to come to light.
No, they don't.
There apparently, I'm going to say, was, there was, apparently, there's a number of us that did not want this whole matter investigated, which is funny because we never even got to talk about it. Because you guys worked it out and, and said, "Please stop doing that." So, we did never had our executive session.
The attorney sent out an email...
Yeah.
Asking a consensus of what we wanted to do. Did we want to meet?
Right.
And have an investigation?
Mm-hmm.
Two counselors responded with a yes.
How do you know?
Two counselors responded with a no, and two counselors didn't respond at all. Correct, Chad? all. Correct, Chad? Because I asked Chad.
At the time, because I asked you too, and you said you weren't really sure on the exact numbers of everything.
Right, but after you and I had the conversation last week, I went back to confirm, and the conversation I had with the mayor about this was when that happened.
Oh, right.
Yeah, so it was way back then.
Which incident are we talking about? My?
Yours.
This incident?
Bill said four voted yes, and two voted, or four voted no, and two voted yes.
So, how did he know that?
If you have six people, and you need a majority, that's four. He didn't have the information, because if he did, he would have seen that two councillors didn't even respond. Okay, he did not have that information.
Okay.
But, just to be clear, though, the conversation that councillor Tracy and city administrator Betts had, and then the subsequent emails saying that they felt it was taken care of, occurred before any final decision was made, as far of an executive session. So, the fact that two councillors didn't respond, you know, they didn't respond in a timely manner, but, you know, we could have followed up with them to find out from them, if in fact it wasn't resolved.
Our conversation was that's why we won't have an executive session. When I asked you how votes went.
No, I don't.
I have your email here. No, not your email, but the email from.
My recollection is that that was an ongoing sort of open issue, and we hadn't gotten a resolution on that, because we hadn't heard from people when it got resolved.
You were just holding the executive session as a placeholder, in case we were going to do it on August 8th, and you had emailed us that, and then we got the email from Jackie on August 6th, so we hadn't even gone to executive session, it was just a placeholder at that point, so.
And at this point, I think I would have rather we gone into executive session.
Why, it won't be a scene, right?
Go through all of it, yeah.
They care about what happened, instead of having it leaked out there, so now we have to deal with it. They did take care of it when it happened. They had a private conversation, and they worked through their issue. Just like in any other business, you have an HR issue, you have a meeting, you work on your issue, and it was done. It was done. Am I wrong? And then an HR document gets leaked, in any other business, it's grounds for termination. Like, I don't understand why we're going back and forth on this. Something was broken, trust was broken, and that's it. Like, that's the thing to go. Like, I don't understand, this is a no-brainer, to investigate this, to find out who the snake is, in our town. Because, this is not good governance, to do this. Like, yes, the incident happened, they worked through it, end of discussion. And you brought it back up in January, in front of everybody, and I had no idea what was going on, none of the citizens had any idea what was going on, and you alluded to something terrible about him, the HR issue, not knowing what the hell is going on.
I just said, and incident, that's all I said.
Wasn't recent, it was four or five months.
I was telling you that I was uncomfortable with that appointment, I had every right to do that. I did not talk about client attorney privilege information. I said, I was uncomfortable with it because of a recent event. That's what I said. And I have every right to do that, because I know what happened in the incident, and I know how uncomfortable.
You don't though, Mayor, because you weren't in the room. You weren't in the room, you weren't in the room. Two people know what happened, you weren't there. Then I'd have to ask you, did you put any pressure on the city administrator to file the complaint against me?
I talked to her after it happened, it needed to go to HR.
That's fine, but you weren't in the room, and we settled the issue back in August of 2020, not a recent issue, to January. You weren't in the room.
If you were uncomfortable with it, wouldn't you have brought it up to have,
September?
To have him not be the council president for the remainder of the time?
He filled out his term, and I was uncomfortable with him being nominated, that's perfectly my rights.
It sure is.
Absolutely, it is. If you read the documents, which I'm assuming that you read of the incident.
Yes.
Wasn't that a little bit alarming to you? Would you put somebody in a situation where they would have one-on-one conversation with somebody that went through that? Would that be okay to you? You'd be perfectly okay with that?
I believe that this is not your story, it's not my story. This was Jackie's thing that she went through.
She is our city administrator.
Right.
She is our staff.
Right.
And this was very concerning. And she's now been publicly. And now.
Yeah, she's been.
We did not have a chance to support her, because the council did not go into an executive session. You guys got voted into an executive session last year, why didn't you? We didn't.
I think they said they voted not. But that's a no vote.
That is a no.
Did you take that as a no, Chad?
No, so, again, just to be, just to be clear, the process as it played out was, we, as everyone's seen, sent advice out to the council about, you know, how this process would work, and, you know, what, if anything, the council wanted to do, and if they wanted to have an executive session to do that, let us know, you know, based on other discussions that have gone on throughout the city, you know, some of which you've talked about tonight, as far as doing investigations or otherwise. You know, it wasn't our place, as the city attorney's office, to make a call as to, yes, this something has to move forward, you know, that the council as a body, you know, needs to make that decision. And while we sent that advice out, and while we were waiting for responses, and there were delayed responses, the mayor's 100% correct on that, you know, we weren't sure how to proceed. We were tentatively scheduling an executive session, when everything got resolved, to, and with all due respect to councillor Tracy, from my perspective, I wasn't worried if it was resolved to his satisfaction, I was worried about it, whether it was resolved to city administrator Betts' satisfaction. And at that point in time, it was, and so, you know, we sent the email out saying, you know, everything has been resolved to city administrator Betts' satisfaction, so there's no need to move forward. Certainly, if the council as a body wanted to hold an executive session and move forward, they could have. You know, but we were certainly never asked that question, and, you know, there was no indication that anyone wanted to move forward. Everyone seemed to respect city administrator Betts' decision on this, and let it go at that point in time. You know, that is my recollection, and, you know, with full understanding that we all have different recollections, there's lots of studies out there that'll tell us that, you know, we don't all have perfect memories, but, to the best of my memory, that is the way the process played out.
Okay, so then why are you so concerned about that? Like, why are you so concerned about administrator Betts, a year later, after it sounds like it was resolved?
Well, I'm always worried about city administrator Betts, but I'm telling you that the reason that we are here having this conversation about an investigation is because of that incident. That's why we're here.
No, we're here to discuss how confidential information was leaked.
And the confidential information is from that episode, from that incident, yes.
I don't think you're hearing it, we're here.
I hear you, I hear you fine.
Who in this room, or in this city, has this information?
I get that.
That was not yours, or yours, or yours, or yours, to leak.
Correct.
Councillor Tracy said it is not your corporate, excuse me, is not your story to tell. If administrator Betts is over this, and they've worked through it, which it sounds like they have, then, like, I'm so confused, like, about this. They had an opportunity to bring it up, just like I called for the session, and you should have done that, September, October, November, or December.
It wasn't out in the public, so why should.
Why did it need to be out in the public?
Because it is, I have no control over that. I know you probably don't believe that, but I did not provide Bill this information.
But you do have control, they voted down, apparently, from next door, but you don't feel like you should censor somebody?
I, no, I don't, I hit, like I said.
You are the leader of this damn city.
So, I can do that, I cannot be for censorship.
Humiliates our administrator.
I can be for not censoring, absolutely, I can be that way.
You can, but own it, own the fact.
Did I say I'm not owning it?
You're not owning it by saying, you're trying to back into a corner, saying you care about administrator Betts, yet you're willing to have this humiliating story out there, making her re-victimize, relive her traumas.
It is all over the internet, I have.
It's about you, and it's about councillor Tracy.
It is not.
And we're all stuck in the middle of it.
Whole city's stuck in the middle of it.
I have a question. Can we, before we do an investigation, are we allowed to make a statement that everyone who has this information can sign, and be as detailed as possible? I did not provide this information under penalty of perjury. List out all the different options, I did not print it out, I did not give it to my spouse, I did not give it to my friends, because I know people like to find their own fault. And then we all sign it, and whatever God you pray to, that you did not leak this information. Can we have some sort of notarized letter, because I'm sure, as councillor Alexander and councillor Todd had said, I didn't do it, I'll stand up right now.
Also, I will, I will.
I didn't, yeah.
I did not give.
I don't have it. I'm not signing anything.
No, we don't have it, I mean, I'm terrified to even tell my husband about things that say confidential information. So, I will sign it, because I'm terrified to break the rule. There are some people that feel they are entitled to break the rules, but that's fine. Can we do that before we go into an investigation, or when does that happen? When can that happen?
I mean, that would cut down on the investigation, if you had, like, you know, you're talking at 7, and you're going down to, going down to 5 and 4, or whatever. I mean, I have no problem saying that I did not, I did not print it, I've never printed anything off of the website, actually, or of our email. I did not transmit it, I did not take a picture of it, I didn't, I had nothing to do with passing it along to anybody. Citizen sitting out there, or somebody out there, I did not have anything to do with it, and I have no problem saying it, and it should be easy enough for almost everybody to say, unless they did. It would whittle it down.
So, yes, the short answer is yes, and that's what I was saying, is having a conversation about what, if you want to move forward with something, you know, what exactly that looks like, and that can certainly be the first step. And, you know, if everyone signs that, and everyone says that they didn't do it, you know, then you can decide, is that enough, or do you want to do more? You know, do you want to do other sorts of investigations? You know, it's really up to this body, sort of, how it wants to proceed and what it wants to do. And if that wants to be your first step, we can certainly draft something, and ask people to sign it. We can't force people to sign it, but we can certainly make that request, and then bring it back to you, and say, this is what's been done, and then you can decide next steps, or you can say tonight, okay, after this, you know, depending on the results, here's what we'd like to do. If this happens, go this way, if this happens, go that way. It's really up to you all as a body, I just want to stress that fact, it's what the majority of this body wants to do, is the path that we will follow.
Well, I want an investigation, so we're at four, at least with that, so we should at least start with that. I think we're four, maybe five, I don't know.
What would you like the investigation to look like?
I would like to start with interviews, or at least have self, you know, recusing, or not recusing, but saying that you didn't do it. I mean, I think that that's just easy enough to do. It would save us some money. We could ask the former councillors if they want to do it, I'm.
Oh, everybody's gonna say no.
Huh?
Everybody's gonna check the no boxes.
That they didn't do it?
Yeah.
Well, then, yeah, no, no, I agree.
Are we saving any time or money, or are we just creating an extra step?
Um, I don't know, my word means a lot to me.
A lot of us.
I don't know, my word, I mean, that can't be bought, so I don't know, my word means a lot to me, and I would hope, if we're all sitting on this council, it does to us, too. What if there was an oops? What if we look back and go, oh my gosh, I accidentally printed it up, and I left it on my desk, or, you know, when a neighbor came over and took it. I mean, I'd rather have that as an admittance from somebody than I didn't do it, and then, oh, you did.
I know some of the names you could eliminate pretty easy, when he went and said Linda Niese's name after hearing the statement, she wouldn't have given that to him, if he's the last person on this planet. They do not like each other, she does not like him, Ed.
Well, I mean, that's why I think.
Saying that, it's like he's trying to throw somebody else under the bus also.
Well, I think that we, you know, what, couldn't we ask the former councillors that were also on that email, just as a friendly, couldn't we just ask them and say, you know, would you like to sign that? And, I don't know, I mean, obviously, people can sign whatever they want on things. My word means a lot to me, and I would not sign my name to something that I know would perjure myself. And I can't hope that anybody else would, so.
We can ask anything.
I'd have to agree with councillor Ripley, I think you're just gonna get those all the way across the board. But then, let's go back to what the investigation looks like. You know, what does it look like? We have a number of councillors that can be queried, we have folks that are out in the community that are committee members that could be queried, but they're, they're gonna say no. So, it's not, I mean, it's an investigation that's fruitless. From my perspective, I don't see this stopping. I think that this is gonna continue.
What's your this, I'm sorry?
That, this, this, what is basically taking a situation that happened, and to Chad's point, yes, I also was concerned at the time, and still am, about city administrator Betts. You and I had conversations that were privileged conversations, where I think I shared that with you as well. My feelings about this is, it's not gonna stop. Mayor, I think you're gonna just keep coming at me. And frankly, frankly, I know you're gonna tell me that you're not doing it, but, but, okay, but that's not what I see, and it's in print. So, it's like, I'm seeing things in print, and then I'm getting a narrative that you want to deliver to me, that I don't think is an actual narrative of fact or truth. So, I'm stuck here, and, that's fine, but I'm stuck here in a situation where it's like, I feel like I'm continuing to be exposed, and I'm not sure that it's worth it, to me, to be frank with you, at all. The exposure level is intense, it's a lot, frankly, I don't think it's deserved, but, that's fine. People can have whatever opinion of me they want to have, but, yeah, the exposure level's pretty high, and I just don't see this stopping. So, I'm stuck in this position of, how do you make Gladstone stop doing this to you? And I think everybody sits around this table and talks about the monies that we've expended. In fact, a certain citizen comes and talks to us about money expenditures all the time. Fascinating enough, he's tied to a lot of our attorney's fees. So, it's just like this alternate reality that is generated in the city, and I'm, right now, I'm really kind of just trying to figure out how to adapt to it, because I have two universes. I have this universe, which is the mayor and this group of folks who go after a lot of other people, I have this other universe who's like, you know, responding to the mayor, folks going after a lot of people. That's a reality, and it can be proven by a number of different documents that have been spread throughout this. This is not hearsay, this is written proof. So, I'm in a position that, I appreciate it, city administrator Betts' position, my risk level's way too high for the reward at this point, way too high. And I think the only way that the city's gonna learn or understand anything about itself is to spend a lot of money on this issue, frankly, because what it will do is, it also highlights that when somebody gets very reckless, a citizen, in this case, gets confidential information, and gets very reckless with it, we have no way of mitigating it. And if we're spending money on this, maybe that will make folks who are concerned about our budgets, think twice before they get so reckless. It certainly might keep them from coming up in front of us and telling us about how irresponsible we are spending our money. But right now, I feel like my risk is way too high, and I don't feel like this is gonna ever stop. So, we have to either stop it, or we won't have citizens who really care about the community on this council. We'll continue to have citizens who are more concerned about what their name is, how they make their name, how they mark their name, and, you know, more concerned about themselves than the city. So, I have to make some decisions, because I think the risk level's high. Sorry.
Matt, you are not the only target, and I don't know why.
Well, I tell you what, Mayor, I don't think anybody on this council has had to have a meeting with the director at their place of employment to try to explain this, or talk to a number of different official, elected officials in the region, and try to explain what's going on here, you know. So, whether you're targeted or not, this may affect my livelihood, and I don't, I don't see anyone else in that, in that position. Let's spend some money, let's find out who did it.
Every company out there spends a lot of money to make their companies better.
Yep.
They bring in people to talk about leadership, they bring in people to talk about everything out there, because it's worth it for that company to spend the money.
Yep.
When it makes your company stronger.
Let's spend some money.
I agree.
I think this is not the only thing either, Randy, I think we're talking about some other things, too. Let's spend some money.
I'm all for it.
I think the citizens are, too.
I have a question. Are we talking about spending money on the investigation, or spending money on potential training within what I consider this company of people?
I think all of it.
Okay.
I think in order for us to be the better us, the best us we can be for our community, I think we need to be, we needed, we need to take care of the leak, your boat's gonna sink if it keeps leaking, but we also need to figure out how to go forward, and how we can all better ourselves, and we can all learn something out of it. 10 years down the road, might be another situation, and we're gonna know how to take care of it. But if we don't learn from every situation we can, we're just gonna continue to make mistakes.
Yeah, we've got to stop doing this. Well, it's out, there's nothing we can do, let's move on. We need to figure out how to stop these breaches, otherwise, it will continue to happen.
How to stop the personal attacks on everybody.
Well, I thought we discussed that in January, and I felt so good. We need to figure out how to stop these breaches. Otherwise, it will continue to happen.
How to stop the personal attacks on everybody.
Well, I thought we discussed that in January and I felt so good about it and, um, apparently not, so.
Well, I wouldn't say that.
I would.
I have never said anything on internet or anything to you that I have not discussed with you personally.
Right.
I don't do that. That's not the kind of person that I am. And if I had a problem with any of you, I would just flat out pick up the dang telephone and talk to you. So don't, don't accuse this group of things like that because that's not the kind of person that I am, ever.
You're part of this group though. So we're all, we're all in that lens.
You're talking about people who attack. The people in this room are not the perpetual attackers. It's the people who live outside of the city. Now, I'm gonna tell you this, are not outside of the city.
Oh, okay.
The people that, that are not counselors. But those are the same people that voted for us. Those are the same people that are our watchdogs. So I understand what Bill Osburn did was completely wrong. But I want to just, for one half a second, have everyone take a look at it from one other side and just, I understand, I really do. Do, if this council was doing something completely wrong, maybe making back deals and we were all getting driveways and somebody whistleblowed on that, do we shut them down too? I mean, I, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to look at both sides of the coin. I understand that that's wrong. But it is a citizen's responsibility to keep an eye on this council. It is absolutely their responsibility and it is their given right as a taxpayer and a voter. There's a bunch of people sitting out there, many of them who probably wrote letters. That's their right. And if they were mad about something, they would come and tell us. And I understand that we need to find out about who leaked this information and that's really important to people. So because it's important to some of you or all of you, then I will make it important to myself as well. Because I want to be a part of a really good group of forward-moving people. But I don't want the people in this city to think that if they are calling us out on something that we did that was completely wrong, that we're gonna run them down. Because it is their right as a voter and a taxpayer to make sure that we are on the up and up.
Yeah, but I, I have to disagree though. This, this was a matter that was brought to resolution. And I, I agree with you, Council Gerlinton, about citizens responding to something that they feel we're doing, like you said, backdoor deals. Everybody gets a new driveway, what have you.
Right.
This is a personnel matter that came to resolution.
I know.
And other folks took it upon themselves to push it out with a new narrative. So let's not pretend that this was actually the story because it was never the story in those posts. And the narrative that went along with those posts, again, didn't tell the story. What they did was they, they added language, the, the author added language that really didn't characterize this, the incident at all in the light that should have been characterized. So, I mean, when I say, I wish we'd gone to executive session, I truly do. Because that would have given me the opportunity at the time to tell my side of the story, which I never did. We chose to deal with it because it was a personal conversation. We chose to deal with it personally. I didn't, I didn't have a problem with working with council or with City Administrator Bets on finding a solution. I have a lot of respect for City Administrator Bets. I know that this was a very difficult conversation. And let's remind ourselves, what was the conversation that we had? I came in to discuss John Morgan being the improper facilitator for the racism listening session. And I was correct in saying that and I'm still correct with it today. However, we worked through it and we found common ground and we got there. This is not the same as somebody doing a backdoor deal and working out, you know, the city, we've heard about the collusion kind of conversations and a certain city counselor that I know has, has popped in a couple of doors and taken a couple photographs of city counselors after city council meetings. That's totally fine. That was well within that city council's right at the time he was a citizen. It was fantastic. But my point though, is that this is not how we conduct business. And when two adults decide that they are at a place of, of not impasse, but of resolution, that's where we were. But I keep hearing the mayor saying, no, let's dig it up again. Let's dig it up again. Let's dig it up again, as though there's something else to daylight. There's nothing else to daylight. So I can't really sit on this council if I'm just gonna have a smear campaign against me every step of the way. But at the same time, I'm duly elected on the council and I have constituents who've reached out to me and said, stick with it. Stay there, we support you. So I agree with you, but I disagree with the fact that this is the same as a closed-door session where they're colluding and two adults having a conversation to talk about a very difficult conversation. I was representing my constituents in that conversation. And I will do that anytime and I will push forward and I will always represent under marginalized, underrepresented, marginalized folks. That's who I am. And if the conversation gets difficult, I'll try to keep a smile on my face. All right? I appreciate it. Thank you though, because I, we both do agree. Okay, we agree on that.
I, I hear, I hear what you're saying. I do, I really do. I, I hear what everybody's saying. I'm just trying to make sure that everything gets talked about. And, um, that, that we, that we really do look at it from all angles so that, um, I, I like Counselor Hartman's idea a lot. I would like for her paper and my paper to say that, number one, we never requested the information and as far as the city attorney knows, we never got the information from them.
And I'll be honest, I didn't, I didn't read it because it's not my business.
I'm not on social media. I have, I have not seen any of it.
And, and just, and just, you know, to piggyback on what you said, I was his constituent and I was that private citizen that came forward with Paco Mous D E I as Director of Marketing and Public Investment here. And we were, obviously you all know, very much in favor of a listening session. And we all had a conversation with Jackie and Senator Bets and Counselor Tracy that, that this facilitator is a little tone deaf. You know, we need someone who has experience in this topic. It was not a white saviorism moment. It was not any of that. It was Counselor Tracy listening to his constituents of color that this was a poor choice of a facilitator because you have to have experience in, in this space and provide a safe space. And it wasn't a safe space. And so it was not him. It was not his idea to walk in and talk about this. This was, we had an email chain. We were dismissed as private citizens that this was not the facilitator. You know, we're gonna do this, you know? And, and he went in on private citizens behalf, those of us who were pushing for that listening session. And I wanted to set that, that clear so that people don't think that Matt has some sort of white saviorism problem. Counselor Tracy, sorry. And I'm not saying we need to dig it up. My comment was, the information is out there and we have to say something about it. That was my message.
And you could just say it's resolved.
Well, we need to make us, we need to say something.
It was resolved, Mayor. And, and you had a leadership opportunity multiple times over the last, uh, what are we at now? Nine days? You could have resolved it and just said, this is a resolved issue. There is no issue. There is a time when there is no issue.
So I need to go out and make a statement on behalf of everybody.
No.
No, but you need to make a statement as the mayor. You're the leader of the city.
Well, I am one person out of seven apparently, all the time. I hear that. And I'm not gonna make a statement without getting you guys on board.
You could have checked in. I think everybody would have said it was resolved.
We were scheduling a meeting.
I honestly couldn't get together before that. My apologies.
Yeah, I mean, continuing to drive the point home is just, at this point, it's not doing the damage, but it's gonna continue to do the damage, especially if stories just constantly are getting augmented with such erroneous information. It, it's, yeah, nobody wants to be in that.
It keeps getting uglier and uglier. And the person, our dear citizen who got that out of the first place, keeps making it uglier and uglier, alluding to the fact that the reason she got her raise.
Oh, yeah. That's the other thing too.
That's nice.
Right. That's really good. Because he just keeps adding to it. I, I mean, you know, it, this is ripping off a Band-Aid, but I think it's well, long overdue for this Band-Aid to be ripped off. I, I have tried over the years to really work with you, Mayor, and try to support. And, and this is the crazy thing about it. It's like, I've tried to support a lot of your agenda and I agreed with a lot of mo, I agree with a lot of your agenda. And it's just like, I don't understand where these folk, where you're, you're getting so, where, where you, you came out in January with this. I'm just like, where's this coming from? I can understand it if I was opposing, uh, your agenda or posing what you wanted to do for the city, but it's really hard for me to understand.
So I'm not allowed to have my own opinion?
No, you're allowed to have your own opinion. You're not allowed to target me.
I'm not targeting you.
Okay.
It really looks that way from, from the way that.
I was uncomfortable with it. That was the right time to say it because that was the discussion we were having.
No, we weren't. It's five months later.
So now moving forward, I'm not allowed to have my opinion or say.
You're allowed to do whatever you want to, but you're not allowed to target me.
I'm not.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
Because I agree, we have a lot in common. I am not targeting you. And I'm sorry that the friends that I have or the people that I associate or the people that know me, you just assume are my minions and are doing my bidding. That is absolutely not true. Just like the three of you and the people that attack me constantly. Do I blame the three of you for it? And tie it back to you? You, Tracy and Matt? I mean, do I tie it back to you guys? I don't. Because you're not held responsible for everything everybody else does. There's a lot of strong-willed people in this city that there's nothing that you can do to, to move sideways. But here, here's the difference is that if I were in your shoes, I would have made a statement on my own accord and made it very clear. This is my statement as a leader in this city that, yes, this, maybe this person is an associate or a friend. I completely condemn this action. And I would have done that if, if it was any of you. That this, if, if any of you were in Counselor Tracy's shoes right now, I would still call for the damn meeting. Because we agreed to support each other, even though we may not like each other. We may not get along, we may not see eye to eye, but we agreed in January to support each other. And you had the opportunity to do that and you didn't do that. I would have done that.
And all of you could have, but you didn't do it either.
Do what?
So it falls solely on my shoulders to make a personal statement on behalf of Gladstone.
I made a statement too.
On the platform as a city council, you stood up there and you published a statement.
Absolutely.
I don't do that without checking with everybody else. I am not gonna go out and put myself out there or do something wrong.
My opinion, not the opinion of the body, is my own personal opinion. Because my constituents expect me to, to speak. And when you stay silent, then you are complicit. Those are the optics.
Yeah, I hear that a lot. Silence, yeah, absolutely.
You should listen to that.
I, I try to be thoughtful and do things as carefully as possible. That's what four and a half years being mayor has taught me, that you do not jump in and make blanket statements without being thoughtful and getting all of the information and doing it right.
So your, your approach then, your thoughtful approach is to allow Bill Osburn to continually post this erroneous information on next year?
I have no control over Bill, none whatsoever.
You did a do not vote.
I did, and I'm gonna do it on every single one moving forward because that's what I do.
Own your position. Don't be saying I'm not allowed to have my own opinion. You are.
I can put that, I can say yes on every single thing if I want to, unless I don't have to answer to you.
Nope, you have to answer to the town. And they all saw it and it all got sent to me. I got, it got sent to me in so many levels. People see it and I'm just telling you, people see it and it's not a good look. And I'm gonna tell you, it, there's a day of reckoning sometimes with these things and it's not a good look.
Well, I'm sorry that I take the stance of never censoring. And most often I don't even look at the posts. I just say yes. Well, you did on that one. I've done it on every other one.
Take it from me, get off of social media.
I don't even know why I'm on, I, I don't even know why they send me these things to vote. So I, whatever. All right, so it sounds like we're gonna have an investigation.
So what I would, what I've heard and, yeah, I think there's three things that the council can decide upon tonight. One is, does the council want to make a statement as a body related to both the release of the information as well as, you know, a statement about resolution of the underlying issue? The, the second is moving forward with an investigation. Um, in doing that, what I would recommend is that, um, the city, through our office, hire a third-party investigator, a completely neutral person to look into this and let the professional investigator determine the best way to proceed. And we can certainly ask that investigator if it is in their professional opinion whether or not the letter that Counselor Hartman suggested should be a first step or not. And then the, the third thing would be whether or not to direct staff to schedule and, um, have a facilitator, uh, come by and to further a discussion about, along lines of what you started in January, to try to resolve some of these underlying issues. So those are the three things that I have in my notes about potential action items for the council tonight to decide.
Do you want us to do it all as one or do each one individually?
Um, what I would recommend, at least for the statement, um, you know, let's, let's maybe talk about that and what that statement would be. Um, you know, I, you know, I, I could certainly, or work with Jackie to come up with a statement that generally says something along lines of that the, the city treats, uh, is, is very concerned about the release of its confidential information. It, uh, condemns the fact that, you know, confidential information is leaked and would highly encourage that any information that is, continues to be posted on social media or otherwise is taken down. And that, you know, the, the underlying situation, um, was resolved to, uh, City Administrator Bets' satisfaction. And that's how, or something along those lines, you know, making sure that it's, that City Administrator Bets is comfortable with whatever that statement is. Uh, similar to maybe what she sent out to all staff earlier this week and copied you on. And so that would be the, the, the aspects of the statement that I would suggest that you all make.
I, I'm not really comfortable with any statement being made about Jackie, that Ms. Bets. I'm really not. That's, that's not our call. That's her call. She's our employee. And I think that that's really assuming. I mean, I, I, I don't, I'm not comfortable with that at all.
Just, just to be clear, and I don't know if you saw the email. I, I'm pretty sure that the council has copied on it, but City Administrator Bets sent a, an email to all staff this week about the underlying incident. And so I was just going off of the language that was in her email.
So as long as you're okay with it, then I guess I should say I'm okay with it. But I would not be, I would not want to assume and don't feel like you have to do anything that you're not comfortable with.
That's correct. Thank you.
Okay.
And, and I didn't mean to, uh, imply otherwise. So thank you for clarifying that.
Yes, on all of, yeah, yeah.
Talking about the statement on the first.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Counselor Tracy.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Of course.
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
And me, yes.
Okay. And then the other two, uh, as you suggested, I think you could lump them together if you want, which would be, um, having our office hire a third-party investigator and taking that individual's lead as to, you know, how the investigations should proceed. And then, um, having staff schedule and another work session similar to what was done in January with, with a facilitator, facilitator to further unwrap some of the interpersonal issues going on with the council.
Uh, yes.
One thing, you know, we're supposed to have a discussion about how we're.
Council goals.
Yeah, council, or no, the commitments as well.
No, commitments, yeah.
If we can't hire someone, I feel like that's a proper time to, you know, have those discussions. If we can't hire a facilitator, I think we probably should just remove that to another time.
The work session from Tuesday?
That conversation, feel like is a natural segue until the interpersonal relationship issues. Um, and if we can't have a facilitator there next Tuesday, then maybe that should be removed. Wanted to bring that out there. And then another thing on the investigation part, that a citizen wrote in, in one of the emails, was the potential of an IT breach. was the potential of an IT breach. You know, I guess we haven't really talked about that. Is that there is a potential that there is an IT breach. And as long as that's included in that, we can change the policy and have that. But otherwise, yes. Counselor Todd.
Yeah, is, is there any reason to believe that we have IT breaches? There's, there's nothing at this time.
No, there's no reason to believe that we've had an IT breach.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
And I say yes as well.
Okay.
All right. That should be it. Someone like to make a motion to adjourn? Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion was made by Counselor Hartman, seconded by Counselor Tracy to adjourn.
I want to end on a good note. So I got the guy's card down at the pickleball court, Thomas Yellow Eyes. And he said, we can all come down as a council and give us an hour and a half free lesson.
I'm too out of shape for that. I'm too out of shape.
And it's fine. It's not, it's not that hard. It's not. You don't run that much.
Can we quorum it?
You're about to meet him here to, to meet him at a terrain.
Can we quorum it in pickleball?
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Yes.
Counselor Hartman?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Mayor Stempel?
Yes, we need adjourned at 6:40 PM.